... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, that we're doing rounds. Roll call starting on my right.
Counselperson Brent Futter.
Mayor Jimmy John Caine.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Uh, approval of tonight's agenda?
Uh, nothing to add from staff.
Will you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries approval of council meeting, minute, meetings of June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
But those are fun to type out, huh?
(laughing) Yeah.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
No, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, they'll take us to finance and budget. Any questions on that? Build a list, ask, or direct it towards Bill, please.
What road do we clear?
That's for the parks.
Oh.
Mainly, and then our portion of fifteenth. Um, I'll hear that we cooperatively work with the township on.
Dump road and a couple alleys are in there to be.
Yep, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
I can second that.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. They'll take us on to motions and general business. First item, under motion and general business tonight, will be public safety, hazardous trees. The city has received complaints regarding hazardous trees on private property, just this year, four have complained, and two are about the same property. City ordinance six-ten point oh-four R, public nuisance affecting peace and safety deals with junkyards, mowing, garbage, et cetera, and lots of other trees. The city could send a letter to the property owner, ask them to remove the tree. If they don't, we can abate the situation by hiring a tree service to cut down the tree and assess the cost back to the property. That's just like we do with yard cleanups, et cetera. As always, we can work with the property owner, come up with a reasonable timeframe for the property owner to complete the order. Section R, the ordinance reads, "All other conditions or things which will be likely to cause injury to the person or property of anyone." Rochester ordinance has been researched, and they have created an ordinance that addresses hazardous trees. This could be an option. With the recent Emerald Ashport situation, we may be getting more and more of these complaints coming in from adjoining property owners. Scott Freely has been certified to identify hazardous trees. We will only address trees on a complaint basis. So, we have options to discuss and think about. One may be to enforce under chapter six, one would be to create new hazardous tree ordinance, one would be legal as it is in law enforcement. So, we're open for discussion. We have a letter in there from one of the neighbors of the adjoining tree problem up there, and I think we have perhaps the other neighbor here.
I will say first of all that I do think we need to research. It just so happened that I printed off that hazardous tree thing for last week's meeting in, or for a couple weeks ago. If you're familiar with it, I didn't realize all we had is R. So, regardless of whether we enforce to use the R, which I think we can, I think it makes sense to put something together, which we haven't done yet, right?
No. No, I wasn't gonna go ahead and do it till I knew which way you guys do. So, in the past, when anybody was called, and Cheryl has been one of them that's called in, like last year, I think I talked to you too, um, council has just said, you know, property owners have to work it out. Um, and then Sean's had a couple of people now because of the Ashport, and then Cheryl called again right during this time, um, and just wondered why we weren't following our ordinance using R. Um, so then I told her we would bring it to council, um, and then Sean had talked to City Rochester, so we did look at theirs, but we need to look differently, but we would probably basically did a tree, hazardous tree ordinance, it'd probably be based off theirs.
Right, that seemed to make sense to me, I, when I read it, it's pretty inclusive, but the R is, um, I do believe it could cover this? I don't know. I think I already said that in my opening statement on that, I'm not a huge fan of just using that, it's pretty vague, one sentence thing, so I, well, I guess I don't know what, so the trees are ready to fall over here, is it? You're the one that, was one of your neighbors?
Yeah, Danny Ware is my next door neighbor. So, um, he's got a couple of trees that hang approximately sixty feet over our property line, and, um, they're perfectly aligned, but physics is going to take them down because the whole canopy is covering our property, and the only thing on his side is the trunks. I have pictures if you wanted to see.
Aren't we already allowed under our ordinances to, when something like that is physically hanging over, you could trim that off?
It, it is the homeowners, it would be your responsibility, if you wanted to, you could cut that tree straight up at your property.
I spoke to three different arborists, and they told me because of the way the tree is, that would kill the tree, and we're not allowed to deface the tree, so because there's no, there's no green on his side, it would kill the tree if we were to cut straight up.
You've discussed that with Daniel?
Yes.
Have you discussed the fact that if we follow through with two of these different ones, we're gonna kill the tree anyhow?
I-
He wouldn't rather take the chance that the one lens was removed, and, how about-
What he said to me was, um, I, I brought it up to him and said, um, "We gotta do something about these trees, Danny," and he said, "Oh, they're not hurting nothing, they're not, the canopy is a hundred percent over my property, and it needs to be removed." And one of the arborists I spoke to, Corey Olson, from Olson Tree Service, he went over and spoke to Danny and told him that it was hazardous, and that it needed to come down, and Danny wanted to argue with him, too. But when I spoke to Danny and I said, "We have to do something," at our expense, he was fine with one of the two trees being removed at our expense, and, um, that's just, they're his trees.
So, in your situation, where you are, it's two trees, yes, right there?
Yes, it has two walnut trees that are overhanging.
And then Zack is another tree.
They're over the garage, Brent.
Um, these are next to the garage, did you wanna see both?
Yeah, sure.
And I have been back there with your next door neighbor, looking at things and have seen, and I know which one she's talking about.
Do you live to the north, we have?
Uh, yes, he is north of us.
I say just looking on the satellite, it looks like they're over here.
I took photos in the winter and in the summer to have an idea, to show you exactly how the branches.
I did speak with Alicia Nelson, who is our-
Yes.
Insurance, and through the League of Minnesota Cities, and she did some phone calls today, checking to see, uh, what, and the League of Minnesota Cities says they really don't tell people the best, because they don't wanna put themselves, but they did send, they forwarded some other cities, Lake City, uh, Burnsville, I think there's four cities. I have not had time to read it, because I didn't get it till four thirty-five o'clock this afternoon, uh, so I think a person should look at some of those other ones. Alicia said she really liked Lake Cities.
So, do they go in and identify them, and?
And that's what I, she sent to me, and I haven't read through it enough that I wanna make account of that, but.
You're up for final.
Yes.
So, did the arborist say anything, I mean, obviously not just cutting it completely off at the property line, but did they say there's any way that they would even recommend trying to trim it back?
All the recommendations I got from Dustin Doyle, Corey, um, Olson, and Tyler Sloan from Sloan Tree Service were all to remove, uh, to, to take the tree down.
And you were also the leader, that's kind enough to lay his garage in the end of your property passage.
He posted, uh, his solution to that was taking two four-by-four posts-
I saw that, I'm not too sorry.
-stuck it in my garden, and I never stopped over to knock and say, "Hey, can I do this?"
I think having a specific ordinance would give us a little more teeth in these situations than just relying on section R.
I will tell you, um, just, the pictures have changed my mindset somewhat, right? I'm not big on plain, simple government, have to tell everybody what they gotta do, make them do it, hold their hand while they do it. Um, I don't like section R. I would rather see, I guess if I'm gonna end up doing something, I'm gonna be looking more at hazardous tree ordinance. But section R, to me, section R, I, I, I just can't live with section R, but I say it, but that covers anything, and you can have, any, I won't worry about that. These pictures are very, I've never studied your backyard, your yard, not that, I know you, now I know where you're at, and I know the way it was nice enough to let in. Do what he needed to do to fix his garage for quite a extended period of time, that's not the only reason, I didn't realize the ground condition situation, I thought you had an estate and all.
Yeah, no, it's the whole, it's, it's the entire tree, both of them.
But I will tell you, I'm going to be more leaning towards, if we do this, creating a ordinance, not just burying it in section R, I don't really like section R. Um, what do you guys say, brother?
Yeah, I kinda, I kinda agree there, this, these pictures.
You've got one, you've got one, two trees giving you a problem there.
What's that?
You've got one, two trees giving you a problem there.
The two, the only two of them were identified as hazardous. Um, he's got an oak that hangs over our property, too, but the arborist said that they couldn't even turn that until fall, because apparently you can't trim oaks during their growing season, it has to be in the spring or fall, so they said they wouldn't be able to trim that then, but the two that they identified were the ones that took pictures of.
We'll just, so you're lucky, right?
I mean, these pictures do adjust us, I mean, I've never been in a backyard either, and it's pretty bad.
I don't know, I guess I, I'm gonna, I'm not trying to hold things up anywhere, but still rather look at a couple of these other ordinance that Sean hasn't mentioned, and see, uh, just how they are worried about, they are, uh, this is, this, this could become a huge undertaking with, with the Emerald Ashport and everything else. It's just too bad that we can't, you've done what you could, I'm not, this is not that neighbors can't work with a willing neighbor, you know?
He's unreasonable.
Well.
So, I, I'm totally down with the ordinance thing, I'm torn on whether or not, do you send a letter out? Part of me thinks he needs a letter to tell him that, but no, but I'm hesitant, because I don't wanna write, send a letter based on our little letter R in that ordinance.
That's what I mean, I-
Rather almost hold off and get to work on trying to see if we can throw an ordinance together sooner. What would be the-
We can have-
We have to have two readings of anything new or any ordinance, so how far apart is that after this?
So, by the, um, the second reading could be done in, what, August thirteenth meeting?
I can approve it, that's assuming you can get something dropped off.
So, at the next meeting, you can, we could have, we'll sit down and look samples and put together something that I think will work for us, and, yeah, and bring it to you guys.
I don't know what the rest is, but I, I, I'm kinda, that section R kinda comes in, you know, I mean, I know it's serious, it's always been areas.
I met with Dave Weinhold today, and went up and looked at some-
So did I, right after you.
And looked at some of the trees up in, and he was telling me, I asked him about City Rochester, because we have looked at some of theirs, he says they have scaled back on taking down just any tree, but if they are safety concerns, they absolutely, if they're overhanging a house, if it's a garage, at least it's not light, that it's risking, it's just the property, but if they're houses and stuff like that, he said they absolutely have the right to go in and those and make adjustments, just like.
Well, I, that's why I wanna see some of the other ordinance, Sean, I wanna see that we're not gonna just have somebody call, "There's a branch hanging on my yard, I want that tree taken," you know, I mean, this, this, this is an eye opener, this is a different situation, I, I have to tell you, I wasn't, until I saw it, I wasn't thinking what I'm thinking now. I'm glad you brought the pictures. So, well.
Well, then, as Craig pointed out, we would send out the letter first, giving the property owner a chance to work out their own arrangements on it, so if they can work out their own deal, that's great, it would only be in the scenario of not, uh-
You don't have to be handling just like-
The timeline.
-the training, I would say.
Then we'd order it.
They're gonna get obstinate about it, not work with each others, I guess we'll have to start and do something. I guess I'm learning things from this step, I'm a hundred percent fifty-fifty or something.
(laughing)
You've done a nice job changing my mind, I'll tell you that.
So, how do we, how do we word this?
Um, you don't need to do a motion right now, um, we've just given us direction, we'll have to go back and-
Put a draft.
Hey, research something.
Draft ordinance together.
Yep, go up with the draft of that.
Or you can put it into an ordinance, or a motion if you want.
Well, I think we'll have to make a motion if they craft a hazardous tree ordinance, so we can all agree on both of them.
Well, if they can just go with the draft without, that-
Yep.
Either way, whatever works. But do you need anything for, so technically we're not taking action on anything right now?
No, no.
And then when we bring that first draft, you can tweak it or revise it with your ideas, and then we'd still have the ability to, um-
Well, being like you've dealt with it for so long, hopefully another month, two more months will be doable.
Fifteen years.
So, you know, our luck now, we're gonna get the granddaddy of all storms here in the next, it's gonna take four weeks, and it'll be the day before the second reading, and it'll come down.
And I just wanna be clear, too, that we have had other calls in town, and with the, with the Ashport in town, we're gonna be getting a lot of these calls, so that's why we brought it now, I mean, it helped that she called, you know, she kind of pushed me to bring it up, but with more trees dying in town, it's gonna come.
Well, I'm sure this is quite common in other, other yards.
I just don't want Danny to think we're picking on-
That one's just pretty extreme, he's gonna think that, I think.
Janice Hagan and her neighbor just went through it, and there were some, and I went over and tried to ease some, what was going on between them, they ended up, I believe, getting it worked out, but same situation.
I just don't, I just wanna make sure this ordinance works for everybody, I don't want it to be something that, okay, now's my chance to get after that neighbor over there, I'm making a first tree down or something, you know?
Yep.
Somehow it's gotta be crafted, so it has to be a situation. So, I guess for our, we don't need a, do you have anything else you want to turn out?
No, I think that, well, I think it sounds good.
None sounds good.
I guess the staff wants to get to work on crafting an ordinance, and they'll, maybe just showing us some of the other ones, so we can have a few ideas of our own, so we can, uh, I'm sorry it's taken fifteen years, we'll see what we can do now. Thank you for coming, thank you for waiting long.
It's only been a mere small for about ten.
Cheryl, can you leave, do, can you leave those pictures with us?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
We'll put them in the files.
Yeah, I promise of them.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next action, if you can stay if you'd like, and you can leave if you'd like, it's up to you.
Is that okay? I do it to the work.
It is okay.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Under general business would be lot split, Donovan Russell, William, four oh five South Main Street, they're working with their two neighbors to the south, and propose to sell them twenty-four feet along each of their backyards. If approved, the survey will be completed and quick planning deed is drafted and recorded. The planning commission will public here on July second, may I recommend approval of a lot split? D and Z?
No, no issues.
Everybody's fine.
So, both the neighbors apparently wanna have?
No, there's no issues.
I mean, both neighbors are, they're like, just out of the blues, and you both want to fence our area, no? That's what, where it came from?
Some of them wanna fence-
Or is the other one selling it just so that it's all the equal size, or what?
So, Looney's lot runs like an L shack, and so, yeah, they, they went to, Donovan Russell went to both neighbors and said, "Hey, would you be interested if we gave you the, an extra twenty-five feet?" And of course Chad on the very south said, "Yeah, I'd love it with, for my dog and the fence," which we just did a couple months ago, and then Pete Schreger was like, "Yep, oh, I'll take that, too." Um, there's a vial tree, so that's how they picked the twenty-five feet, is to go behind that.
Twenty-five or twenty-two?
Or twenty-four feet, yeah.
So, we worked out for everybody. Any questions or discussion? Always council action, questions to approve lot split as requested, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item will be Southern Hills North Ridge EAW requirements. As per the EAW process for the expansion of Southern Hills North Ridge, it is required by state statute, the city of Sturfield will make a positive declaration of the need for an EAW worksheet. The attached resolution outlines the finding of facts. Number one, the coal sourd hills development contains more than two-hundred-and-fifty unattached housing units, and therefore must complete an environmental assessment worksheet. The city, number two, the city of Sturfield is a responsible government unit for the preparation of the EAW. Number three, short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated has been retained to prepare the EAW and facilitate the environmental review process. And number four, some communities operating limited partnership has signed a development agreement, which includes reimbursement for the costs associated with the preparation of the EAW and the facilitation of the administrative process. So, tonight's action will be to approve resolution two thousand nineteen, dash, a resolution making a positive declaration of the need for an environmental assessment worksheet for the proposed Southern Hills development. You have a motion?
I get nervous on all these, we're not, all we're doing is saying, "Go ahead and do the research."
Yeah, yeah.
You're telling us to go ahead and do the research.
We're gonna have to tell them they have to get it done, basically.
So, this should have been done back in April or May, when we, we-
Oh, sure. I'll make that motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That takes us to Mayor, Staff and Consultant reports. Tonight, the city of Sturfield would like to send our sympathies out to the families of Lee Farnsworth, Don Bartel, Alice Everson, and Tony Gunderson. And we'd like to send a big happy ninetieth birthday to George Thompson, if you look in Sturfield Star, I think they're having a party Saturday, I think it is. Stop and tell them hi, happy birthday. Our community band will be holding another concert on Tuesday, July sixteenth, six-thirty at Bear Cave. Excuse me, that's some heavy behavior supery night. And don't forget, storm is coming to town, it's coming July fifteenth to nineteenth, you can use this group to help with painting, yard work, minor construction, house cleaning, almost anything you need. Sign up by calling Renee Wilson, two-six-one-five-four-one-three, sponsored by United, Sturfield United Methodist Church. Once again, excuse me, and a huge, again, thank you to all the people that put the time and effort into Summerfest, our own staff, all the volunteers, the chamber, participants in the prays and everything else, and turned out to be just, uh, perfect. Whether hell off, they did a great job, whoever's in charge of that, I'd like to speak to them for a little more of that, but it was, that was another grand parade, it was a big day, if you weren't here, you don't want to hear this, so, thanks a lot again. That's all I've got. City administrators report?
Uh, no report, uh, just goes over the holiday, just wasn't anything too much that's not seen in the rest, um, but I did send out the email to give you dates for, um, uh, interviews, and Craig's gotten back to me already, so the rest of you get those in to me, 'cause we're gonna try to keep going on the schedule we originally set up, and we're still on target with that, assuming one of these candidates, uh, will work out, so.
All right, any questions for the minister, you might have thought? All right, thanks, Bill. Finance director, Billy, you'll cover that.
Um, this probably goes with both the committee and, uh, the report, um, department heads are working on theirs, uh, Andrew helped us with the overall items, so now it was just a matter of if any of you've got anything that you want us to consider for next year, uh, get that turned in, and then we'll include that, and then we'll be looking at, I'm gonna think somewhere near the end of July, first part of August, we'll do a budget workshop to give you the preliminary of what we're looking at, so.
All right, any questions on finance? All right, thank you, Bill, that takes us to public work, Sean?
Uh, the one thing I wanna note, too, as far as the Summerfest, how pleasant all the chamber was to work with doing it, and I also wanna, he never really gets mentioned for this, but Craig House every year volunteers his time to come out and pull the cars off the prairie route with the tow truck, and it's kind of a hectic situation with people all over, and we just try and shove them in someone's yard close by that will let us so that they don't get ticketed, they don't get, it's just a matter of getting out to make the prairie work, and he always does it on spur of the moment notice, and he's great to work with doing it, and he never charges anybody, he just does it. So, I wanted to give him some recognition for that, which is nice.
All right, any questions for Sean on any of the projects they're working on, or projects coming up?
You guys are always busy.
We've, uh, I gotta admit, you guys, I shouldn't say admit, compliment you guys, the shape you had earlier again for the weather, with the parks, the drakes, the whole, Summerfest and the whole, thank you, bud.
It's nice you guys gave us the extra guide this summer, too, doing the boxes and stuff, really helped out.
Tell you, tell the rest of them thanks, too. All right, if there's no other questions there, a little city engineers report, you have a monthly SaaS report for us tonight, John?
Yeah, report's in your packet. No other com. I don't have anything else unless you have questions.
Have they set a time for the county to roll out there? Somebody?
That's the only thing I've heard.
Originally it was gonna be June, right?
Originally we had heard be both schools without a session, but that's-
Any other questions for city engineer, any of the projects, or any, or project we thought of?
What's this, uh, two thousand and eighteen CIP project for the concrete, for the contractors leading to any of the driveways?
That has been, um, a request from the contractor, um-
Oh, okay.
Just wanting a letter, and, but I have forwarded on.
He doesn't wanna have to come back every two years and keep replacing, is that what it is?
Right.
Normally he would wait till the second year to do it.
Right, it's either he, he wants to wait until the two-year warranty to go do it all, or just make sure the panels that he's replacing now, he doesn't have to do again in two years if they break again.
Okay. So, what do you, us just wait another year? Put two years on?
Well, so the, the way the contract is written for our projects is our warranty period doesn't start until the project's been final payment made. We had not made final payment because there was concrete items on the punch list. He's requesting for a letter stating that if he replaces those concrete pieces-
No.
Now, he doesn't have to, if those, if they crack again, he doesn't have to do it again.
He doesn't have to do it in two years, two years, do it, Chris.
Right, um, so we're kind of in limbo, waiting for either that letter or some sort of a direction there. Um, and if we wanna just wait for two years and then fix everything at the same time, then we should move forward finaling off the project, and give, and return all the retainage.
Any other questions, engineer? Do you have your answer?
Yep.
Uh, library director, thank you, John.
Uh, next meeting for that report.
Fire chief.
Uh, he had a family conflict, so he'll report down here.
That Texas committee commissioner board reports, chamber of commerce, nothing tonight, we're all relaxing after the Summerfest, the bash. PDA, HRA, what meeting coming up here, ooh, next Tuesday? Finance. Library, representative is not here, park board.
Not last night.
Oh, that one.
Good, it was a long one.
Personnel.
Just the interviews will be coming up.
All right, plans only.
Nothing.
We'll have it August meeting.
All right, public safety?
Um, Mike had just told me during the, or at the end of the festival, or Summerfest, um, citizens were all behaved for the most part, and so they didn't really have any troubles, so he said at least to report that back to you, so, that was good.
Good, right here, everybody's good. Public works.
No report.
Ready?
No report tonight?
Roll call.
No report tonight?
Still one eighty.
No report.
Transit advisory committee.
Uh, they are gonna be meeting, uh, here in the middle of the mon, or, well, it got moved to August now, so you'll get a report.
Uh, they are gonna be meeting here in the middle of the month, or, well, it got moved to August now, so you'll get to report them.
No communications tonight, that takes us to open mic. If anybody wants to use it? Does our guest wanna use the open mic for anything?
She's not a citizen.
We've had non-citizens up there before. The city council, what would encourage participation for me members, please keep in mind, we all know that. So, if no one wants to use it, we'll move on to our final motion of the evening. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
He was a deep one there.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Please do adjourn.